Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Eighty-five percent of the time, we start on time.
Eighty-five percent response.
But if we had every subgroup, another of the Rs, we would measure and the Ds, we would measure, and each had to make eighty-five percent. There we go. I'm treading on some sensitive ground there. I'm not careful. Why don't we start, because we have guests today. Appreciate their patience, and I don't know how many forms we have, but we're going to go right to public participation.
I have one form, if somebody else has one, if they want to let me know, that'd be great. But if Major John Gianella would join us at the end of the table?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
I've got the death hour, huh? All right, after lunch. All right. All right. Distinguished members of the board, good afternoon. My name is Major John Gianella. I'm here in charge of the Marine recruiting for most of Michigan, and I see a lot of familiar faces from last year, but I'm here again to speak about the educators workshop that we, the Marine Corps holds every year. So let me give you my comments here, and I'm basically here to invite all of you to the educators workshop. At the educators workshop, you're going to witness a transformation from civilian to marine, and I think it'd be a great opportunity for educators and administrators to see this. This year, it goes from two to six April. It's a cost-free event for educators and administrators. Again, it's called Educated Workshop, and what it does, it provides you an uncensored view of the tangible and intangible benefits that Marine Corps Boot Camp gives to citizens in Michigan. It does a couple more things during that time. It'll help to dispel the rumors and myths about Marine Corps Boot Camp, because, I mean, you're watching the recruits go through the training. You're going to witness a program instruction at every phase, and actually witness one of the graduations of Boot Camp, as well as what's called the Eagle Global and Anchor Ceremony, where they actually are, start to be called Marines, which is a pretty touching event. I know there's a couple, a few tears were shed last year. It's a pretty emotional event. In addition to what you see, you'll be able to interact with the recruits. They'll pull some Michigan vendors out of training for an hour or so, which they enjoy, the Marines and the recruits enjoy, to get a couple, a little bit, a couple minutes of rest, but you'll be able to speak to some of the recruits from Boot Camp as well, from Michigan. In addition to Boot Camp, you'll go over to Miramar, Marine Corps Air Station Miramar. You'll see aircraft, you'll also see some other military equipment, and talk to actual Marines that are active duty, and also see some of the facilities and the hardware. Goal, it'll provide all the attendees with a firsthand knowledge of the Marine Corps and how we make Marines, and with that, you go back to your offices and your schools and whatever, and you talk to your peers and spread the word, and hopefully we'll continue to, you know, firsthand knowledge about the Marine, how we make Marines, and what the Marine Corps is about to your colleagues. All the individuals that attend, they get two and a half continuing education credits, so there is a, it is a workshop, so you do get credits out of it. And Staff Sergeant Atwell has some packages for you that he'll hand out. It has some, the signup form, if you're interested. Also has, it's last year's, it's essentially a little, a couple-page, I'll call it a yearbook, but it's about three to four pages. It shows some photos and some testimonials from last year. Also in there is a red book called Educator's Guide to the Marine Corps. It gives you a rundown, in a little bit more detail than I presented to you this afternoon, about the educators workshop and a little bit about the Marine Corps. So, I have two minutes left, but that's all for my comments, unless you have any questions. Yes?
Where's this located?
It's located, I'm sorry. You go out to San Diego, California. Again, it's cost-free, so you get out of the weather a little bit. We'll fly out.
Sign her up.
We'll fly out there. Actually, the evening prior, what I'm going to do this year, I'm going to have what's called the Center of Influence meeting, where I'm going to have my staff and myself speak to the educators and administrators that are going to be attending the night prior, just to have dinner, of course, and then go over some, what we do here in Michigan, and how, you know, how we provide opportunities for the citizens of Michigan. And then the next morning, we'll fly out from, I believe it was, what did we go, Lansing or Detroit? What did we do last year? Yeah, we fly out from Detroit, and then we'll head right into San Diego, and let's just say the evenings, you know, that we're not training in the evenings, so we'll enjoy ourselves, have dinner and break bread together each evening out there, and see the sights of San Diego as well. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, John, Dan.
I don't intend to torture you in public, but it's a serious question, actually.
Sure.
But at some point, it would be very good to hear from the Marine Corps, which is extremely excited, so how the Michigan students are able to get in this kind of, on a Republican level. We know what it is, we're part of the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh...
So your exact question is what over what?
Over, like, in your, how many students are able to get in for an academic, uh, system?
So you're talking about academically, how many are qualified? The qualifications are the same with the Marine Corps and the Army. However, you know, there's some different categories when they take the ASVAB. At any given time, we might not be accepting, you know, a certain category, what's called Category, Cat Four, which is, I think, below a thirty-two on the ASVAB, is something that, as of right now, we're not, we're not taking in, but when, maybe when things change, we might, we might be more ability. The ASVAB is the Armed Service Vocational Aptitude Battery. It's a standardized test, which shows you your aptitude in essentially in all different subjects, mechanical, mathematical, English, so on and so forth, to see, you know, where you, where you score and what your abilities are for the military. Does that answer your question?
I was gonna ask you, the percentage of the ABBA.
Sure, yeah, you're right. I don't have any info on that.
It's the same as, Ed Trust has been reporting on it, but ASVAB is the best computer adaptive assessment in the country. I'd hate to put in a plug, but it is, it's phenomenal.
No, I know there's a plug for it. Yeah, and that's, that's one of the things where we've, you know, if some of the lower-budget schools don't have the ability to bring some testing in, that ASVAB is a way to maybe get some, accomplish some of those missions.
Were there other hands up? Dan, John?
Go ahead, Dan.
No, you were first. John, Dan.
Any chance I could bring a guest, a potential future Marine, if I'm able to come?
Um, I don't think it's open to future Marines, but that's something, if there is someone interested in the Marine Corps, I can give you my card, and we can talk about opportunities.
Dan, please.
And just roughly, how many educators and administrators do you generally get to attend?
Sure. Probably the low end will get twenty-something, but we can accept forty or over each year. What'll happen is Lansing, or Michigan, I should say, and then another station from the upper Midwest will team together, and both groups will go at the same time. And then that, it really continuously runs every week, from the spring through the summer, so I'd say from Michigan, about forty or so, to be, to give you a good number.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Appreciate you coming again.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll see some of you in April. Also, yeah, tell your colleagues as well, this is not just open to you, but any educators and administrators. Thanks.
Thank you.
Marty Ackley's son served and is now a civilian, is that correct? When I first met him.
Your son?
Yeah. They didn't interview parents or do any...
You're right.
Actually, Marty could probably pass the physical test now, but back that, in that era, I'm not sure that would have worked. Okay, well, thank you. We're going to go back to picking up on the discussion, maybe we're not, because John was going to lead that. Oh, heck, let's move to the next item. Heck with it. No, I think there was a thought about trying to leave some questions or big, what, how did John phrase it? Issues that were most important to you.
Mm-hmm.
If you could leave that with us today, a couple of those that stand out, and then we would try to, Sally, does that make sense? We would try to work through that a bit. I should let John describe that. He had it in his mind. Other comments that aren't like, aren't process-oriented on that particular item? He's really good to get to answer them.
I have one question, and I, I cannot find the PowerPoint. There was one area where, wait, wait, I think I have it. I do.
There she is.
Yay. Um, under, on page twenty, under the priority schools, we talk about the four reform models, and I'm just curious, is that is still mandated by the federal government, or is that a choice that we've made?
It's mandated.
It is, okay.
What was the question?
I was asking if the four reform models for the priority schools was still a mandate or a request.
It's a mandate?
It's a mandate.
Dan.
And I'm curious, I actually had a similar question around the four. At this point, we must have some data around the relative success of each. What, I haven't seen that. Somebody share their least sense of it with me?
Well, not just turnaround, but the turnaround, transformation, restart, and closure.
So the first three?
Yeah, we do have some research needed to work to share with you.
Yeah.
The first three, what's the relative merit of these?
Do you want to speak to it in general terms, or would you rather send it on?
The requirements in both the turnaround and the transformation model, because you know, the other two is closure and restart, so that's just a whole new ballgame. But, but the requirements built into the turnaround and the requirement model does, is based on what the research says is successful in schools. It's sort of getting those, you know, that you have effective leadership, you have effective staff, that you increase learning time, that you use a research-based instructional model. You know, those factors have research around them, so we can share that with you. You know, like, some of the research says that if you have, if you increase learning time, three hundred hours, that, that you will see a change in achievement. So we can share that with you.
But, just to follow up.
Sure, go ahead.
Of the schools in Michigan that have utilized these, do we know if they've been utilized to any level of success?
Or what the relative rates of success are? So has restart been more effective than, you know, than transformation?
Well, what we, what we just recently did was just looked at the difference between, looked at their proficiency data, looked at their improvement rates from this year to last year, but you have to keep in mind, they're just six months into implementation. But some started their implementation immediately after the plans were approved. So we have that data that we just recently included in the legislative report, which is an annual report, which will show which schools are making progress and which schools are not. And then we can link that to the various turnaround models. So, yeah, we could do that.
I'd be interested in that report.
John, did you want to kind of, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
I just want to, one last thing here. Before you were on the school, on the state board here, the NASB had a, had a committee that studied this too, and they have a report out that has a lot of research embedded within it that you might find very interesting as well. And I'm guessing, Marilyn, do we keep copies of those reports, the NASB reports from their study groups?
We should be able to get them.
Well, I can get one too, but I didn't know if you had a copy here as well.
If it was presented at a board meeting, yeah, they're all in file.
I think, but it's, it's on transformation and turnaround schools.
I might have them.
Yeah, I think I might have one too, but you might find that very helpful as well.
We'll track one.
It'll be easy to get.
You might even be a link now.
That's true.
Okay, and we'll make that available to the entire board.
And John, did you want to, before you decided to enlist?
Maybe they can make something up, Mike.
Might be a better option.
It's not too late.
Was the make.
It's not too late.
How does the make? But would you mind kind of summarizing what you thought might be an appropriate way to leave some?
Right, so in order to give Mike as thoughtful sense of perspective from the board, but then we need help from the public after the presentation today to give thoughts on the waiver gain plan that we all saw today, I guess we were talking about, A, let's ask the staff and Sally to share with the board perspective critiques of what they've heard to date around the waiver request as soon as possible. We need to, any big questions we've got, let's gather from the board and test ECS' system for twenty-four-hour turnaround of information through Nancy. I was suggesting maybe we craft a short survey or a set of questions for board members to contribute. What are the big issues? What are the big concerns? What are the big opinions you have on some of the major elements of the waiver package that was presented today? And we can do that quickly and gather input from board members, and then have a sense to look at that together with Mike in a couple weeks, see what the board is sharing to inform his ultimate waiver request. Does that sound like a reasonable way to proceed? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your target date for trying to get this in?
Friday.
Yeah.
Friday.
It's due February 21st. I know, but I mean, do you have a date prior to that?
To really...
That date exactly?
This is a, let's see, we have two races to the top, both of them do the day before after a holiday, and they continue this time, so it's, have things after President's Day? We'll have it, we'll probably have it in the Friday before.
But when would you need? I mean, we wouldn't want...
Oh, yours has? Yeah.
I mean, we need to do this, the next, whatever. Because examples and examples.
Couple weeks. Oh, yeah, yeah. Because we'll be, that's what happens. Okay, sorry.
Because if we were to consider, for example, I, there was some thinking about, you know, when you talk about eighty-five or a hundred, maybe there's an eighty-five or the cross strata. That would be a lot of work. I just understood, doesn't mean we shouldn't think about that, but that would be one, if there was consensus on that, we'd probably need to move quickly. And we should, and in worst cases, if that's the right thing to do and there's consensus, then we miss a deadline and we go to the next one. I mean, worst case, we should get this right. But it, so we'd let that dissuade our thinking about it. I'm just, because I like it, but I'm just thinking out loud about, there's different answers to your question, depending on how complicated a consensus idea like that might be in order to, maybe just speak to it briefly. You have to rework. This is a good process, but don't take this as a negative, that you have to just try and talk about the timeline.
In order to do that, we would have to rework what we're talking about in terms of subgroups. Rather than treating the lowest thirty percent as the subgroup, you would go back to the nine traditional subgroups and do that. So it would rework what we've done, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't.
Think about it in that vein. My only reason for asking that explanation is the timing would be different for our work, depending on how complicated it was. One might just be a decision A or B with no work involved. But I, this would be good, John.
I think doing that over the next couple of weeks, getting any input, thoughts, the issues flagging synthesis that we can do, that's a miracle for us.
Can Mertz help with that and thinking through the survey?
Help some.
With John, the survey. Thank you.
We have a couple of... Okay. Well, moving right along. Actually, this is fixed up, so don't feel bad about this taking a while today. It's important. I appreciate your recognition of us. Stay outside. I think we're going to...
You could have had me there.
We're going to...
Is it dead spider or some thread?
Of course, we're bringing Sally and Joseph.
She's bad.
I think it was definitely my right earlier.
Or significantly shorter presentation.
So what I might, what I might...
Evidently, yeah, do it over on your side. Didn't mean...
This is really trying to provide information regarding the Smarter Balance Consortium. As you know, we join that as a governing member. We talk about the organization of the consortium, products being developed by the consortium, and timelines. Kind of one of those questions came up this morning, and a little more meat on the bones for that. Sally and Joseph, please.
Yeah, and this seemed actually appropriate, given the earlier discussion when we were doing the standards, and one of the issues when you're, that the feds are asking for the waiver, is are you involved in assessments of the career and college-ready Common Core? So Joseph and Vinstein have been integral to the whole consortium, so we're just going to, I thought it would be helpful for you to have a little bit more information about what's going on with the consortium.
Okay. Well, just a little background, the Common Core State Standards has, have been adopted by most states. There are only five states that have not adopted. Minnesota has adopted in English Language Arts, but not in Mathematics. Everyone else has adopted both. Alaska, Texas, Nebraska, and Virginia are the only three that have, only four that have not. So it's, it's a pretty nationwide phenomenon. What we're looking at with the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium is how do we get from Common Core State Standards specifying K-12 expectations to all students leaving high school, career in college ready? So that's the big push. And what we're talking about here is teachers and schools have information and tools they need to improve teaching and learning. That's what, that's what this is really all about. This is kind of the theory of action behind the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And it comes with three, three legs. We have our summative assessments that are benchmarked to the Common Core, to college and career, career and college readiness. We have teacher resources for formative assessment practices to improve instruction, and this is where the balance part comes into the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. Right now, in almost every state, it's heavily weighted towards summative assessment, and there isn't a lot of resources, there aren't a lot of resources out there for formative assessment practices and tools. So that's, one of the other legs is to make sure that you provide the resources to teachers, individual teachers and to administrators, so that, so that they can track on a daily basis, because you don't want to be giving kids a test every day to find out where they are. This is really about, how do I track my kids individually every day throughout the year to learn where they are, where they need to go, what they need to do to get there? That's what formative assessment is all about. And it's not a product. It's a set of processes. It's a set of tools that you can use to inform yourself about your students. And the third leg is interim assessments, so that you get a sense of how students are going to be doing on that final assessment partway through the year, multiple times throughout the year, or at the end of a, at the end of a unit of instruction and so on. So there are seven key principles that the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium is based on. One is, this is an integrated system. We want to integrate interim assessment with formative assessment, with the summative assessment. Those are, it's really important to have that, that kind of balance. You can have all the great summative assessment that you want, and if you don't have good formative assessment practices in place, you're not going to see the kind of results that you want to see. Evidence-based approach, this is, it's called evidence-based design and test theory. We talk about looking at what are the claims that we want to make about students, and then go about building a test that can satisfy the requirements for being able to make those claims. Teacher involvement is really important here. We want teachers to be involved in the writing of the test items, in the scoring of the test items, reviewing them for bias, reviewing them for content appropriateness, developmental appropriateness, and so on. One of the things that is a major key principle with the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium is that it is state-led, and we have transparent governance, and I'll show you a little bit about what the governance is like. Again, the focus, the whole theory of action is built around improving teaching and learning. That's what, that's what the purpose of this, of this system is. Another key principle is that we want to provide actionable information back to teachers with multiple measures, so that you can get things back to teachers in time to actually make a difference in the classroom. I think that's a really key part of it, and that we work within established professional standards. So there are, again, as I said, in evidence-based design, you start from claims. What are the claims that we want to make about individual students? And in the English Language Arts draft assessment claims, in reading, it is that students can read closely and critically to comprehend a range of increasingly complex literary and informational texts. Well, if you read that closely, that's, that tells you that we're not going to be able to do this just with multiple choice items, or just with some short constructed response items. There are going to have to be a wider range of types of things that kids will have to do on the assessment. In writing, it's that students can produce effective writing for a range of purposes and audiences. In listening and speaking, it's students can employ effective speaking and listening skills for a range of purposes and audience, and different kind of take on it. In research and inquiry, that students can engage appropriately in collaborative and independent inquiry to investigate or research topics, pose questions, and gather and present information. And in language use, that students can skillfully use and interpret written language across a range of literacy tasks. So you see the kind of claims that have come out of this. This has been a long process of developing these content specifications from the, from the Common Core State Standards, kind of boiled down into these claims. Then you can kind of expound on these claims, expand on these claims by going into the Common Core of State Standards. But this is where we're starting, the development of the assessments from, is from these claims about what students know and can do. We have similar claims in mathematics, applying mathematical concepts and carrying out mathematical procedures with precision and fluency, framing and solving a complex, a range of complex problems in pure and applied mathematics, clearly and precisely constructing variable arguments, viable arguments to support reasoning and to critique reasoning of others, and analyzing complex real-world scenarios and using mathematical models.
Is this where we're going to take the test now?
Yes. So...
You did want to get out of here tonight, didn't you?
So you can see that these are, there's a lot of higher-order thinking skills presented in these claims. That means we're going to have to go about the assessment in a, in a much different way than we've gone about the assessment in the past.
Actually, I made that comment kinder to be serious, because I think this really gives you a sense of, at least for folks my age especially, how different the expectations are, and what kids have to have to be able to be globally competitive, you know? And it's, it's a different world, very different world, and...
So that's kind of the, the basics of what Smarter Balance is about, but here's how Smarter Balance is organized. It is a national consortium of states. We have twenty-eight states representing forty-four percent of all the K-12 students in the United States. There are twenty-one governing states and seven advisory states, the difference being, as a governing state, you get to vote on the, on the direction that the consortium is taking, and any of the important decisions, you have a voice. Washington State is the fiscal agent, so they handle all of the contractual issues surrounding the Smarter Balance Consortium. Now, here's a little bit of an organization chart. I'll go through this just briefly. Essentially, member states drive the consortium. And education chiefs, the governors, the state boards of education, or the state legislature, whoever's in charge of education within the state appoints a state lead. I happen to be, have, have been appointed the state lead by Mike for Michigan. There are other state leads for all the other governing states as well that were appointed. And the governing states are voting members, the advisory states are non-voting members. They do get to be a part of the conversations, but not a part of the decision-making. The executive committee reports to the member states, and the executive committee is, consists of elected co-chairs, elected representatives from the governing states, and I happen to be one of the elected representatives from the governing states. I sit on the executive committee as well. We also have IHE representatives, or Institutes of Higher Education representatives, I should say, both from two-year and four-year institutions, so that what we're developing as a consortium really is relevant to the higher education institutions, that they will be able to feel that their input has been taken in developing these new assessments and in setting the standards, so that they represent career and college readiness. We also have the lead procurement state and an executive director that we've hired. Then we have a bunch of advisory partners, lots of panels for students with disabilities, inclusive learners, special populations, Institutes of Higher Education, people who are interested in the technology, and so on. But we also have work groups, and this is kind of the way that the consortium gets its work done. The consortium actually has engaged over ninety state-level staff. So state, state-level staff from all of these states that are part of the consortium are, sit on some of the work groups. So the way we get the, the work done is that the work groups are led by co-chairs from governing states. They have six members from those governing states or advisory states. And the work group responsibilities are to define the scope and timeline for the work in its area, to develop a work plan and, and resource requirements, to determine and monitor the allocated budget, and then oversee the consortium work in this area, including soliciting vendors, and then overseeing the vendors once they are hired. So this is one way in which the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium is truly state-led. The heavy work that's going on in the consortium is actually being done by the state staff. And each of those that are, that are in the yellow, Michigan has a representative on each of those work groups, so we are integrally involved in formative assessment practices and professional learning, in the item development work group, in the reporting work group, in our technology work group, in the test design work group, and in the validation and psychometrics work group. So we've got really good representation to make sure that this really is going to work for Michigan. The others, where we don't have representation, we still see everything that comes out of that and vote on the, on the kinds of things that... that and vote on the kinds of things that come out of those as well. Our advisory panels, again, technical advisory committee and ELL advisory panel. Our advisory panel for students with disabilities, formative assessment advisory panel, and our higher education advisory panel, make sure that we get adequate feedback from a wide range of stakeholders to make sure that we're not leaving someone behind. And I can tell you that this is quite a complex undertaking. The amount of work that's going on in the timeline, within the timelines, is really tight, but it's turning out to be high-quality work, and it's exciting to see the work actually starting to get done. We've had several requests for proposals out. We've hired several vendors so far to do things like help states to determine whether or not their districts are technology-ready to do this assessment in 2014-15. We've just hired a, we're in the process of hiring a psychometric vendor. We just hired the item development vendor, and so on. Our technical advisory committee consists of the following people. If you look up here, I don't know that a lot of these names mean a lot to lots of people, but they mean a lot to me. I know these people, I know a lot of these people, these are really the stars in their field surrounding assessment, not only just assessment or psychometrics, but assessment of students with disabilities, assessment of ELLs, formative assessment, and so on. So we have a great technical advisory committee. So the, this really gets down to kind of the nuts and bolts. What are we developing? This is kind of a schematic of what we are developing. We are developing in English Language Arts and Mathematics for grades three through eight in high school, a summative, a set of summative assessments. That's one deliverable that we have. During the last 12 weeks of the school year, the students will be taking summative performance tasks for accountability in reading, writing, and math. And those performance tasks go beyond what you typically would see on a test. These are things like you might get an assignment in class that you would spend a class period or two finishing up. So it's more like the types of assignments that you get for performance tasks in a classroom. Those will be scored by teachers and returned quickly, at least within two weeks, so that you can get the results back very quickly for students. And then on the other side, you have the summative, end of your adaptive assessment for accountability. That is another piece. This one is where you would have the multiple choice questions because there still would be some multiple choice questions, those kind of short constructed response questions, some of the extended response essays, some technology-enhanced items, and all of these will be scored by computer with some read behind by humans for the extended response, and so on. But this is where you can get your results back instantaneously. Once you finish the test, you get your results back instantaneously on this part, which I think is one of the exciting things that we're doing. Again, students will be taking that over the last 12 weeks of the year. And one of the nice things about this is that students would have a retake option. If they did not do very well on that first try, they could do another try on that assessment. So if students take it in the first couple of weeks of that window, don't do so well, you could do some remediation with those students and then have them take it again at the end of that 12-week window. So that, I think that's a nice expansion on what we currently offer, whereas it's one and that's all you get. In addition, as you can see on the bottom, the left hand in the middle, there are optional interim assessments so that students would be taking a computer adaptive assessment and performance tasks throughout the year to find out where they are during the year. This could be something that students take after the completion of a unit of instruction. It could be a mini version of the summative assessment. It can be kind of what you want it to be so that you can follow students through the year and not have to worry about, I didn't know that my student wasn't prepared because the only option to take the test is at the end of the year. So it gives you the interim, optional interim portion of the assessments to track students throughout the year. And then the green bar that runs throughout that is a digital clearinghouse of formative tools, processes, and exemplars. This is, I think, one of the real keys to the success of the theory of action. We know that formative assessment, and some people don't call it formative assessment. Some people call it formative instruction because it's really a tight integration of assessment and instruction. But we know that formative assessment, when done in the way as described in the literature by William and Black and I've forgotten the other name. I'll remember it sometime.
Jones, I think it was.
But described by, described by the leading scholars in formative assessment, it's one of the most effective interventions ever studied in education. If you do it well and you do it with fidelity to the way it's been described in the literature, then you get some really strong achievement gains by students. And what we're talking about here is really being faithful to that description of formative assessment. It's not, it's not, it's not a product. It is what teachers go in and do in the classroom to follow their students and create their own data about students, they understand where their students are. So we're talking also about this digital clearinghouse having released items and tasks so that people know what the kinds of things that are on the test look like, model curriculum units, educator training, professional development tools and resources, as well as scorer training. And this is another place where we really think that this is going to be a big impact on education because every time you get, every time we get an educator involved in scoring tests, we invariably hear that's some of the best professional development we've had. Because it really, it really integrates into a teacher's understanding, into an administrator's understanding, what it is to be able to score well on a writing task, for example, or a performance task. So we think that's a really important piece there, and then we will have the teacher collaboration tools as well. So this is essentially the balance system that we're talking about creating and are in the process of creating. Some of the major features, this will be a spring summative assessment, as was brought up earlier, starting in spring 2015, the assessment will move to the spring. The interim assessment will be available year-round. We anticipate availability in the 2015-16 school year. The reason that we have that anticipation coming in a little bit later is that our first responsibility is to develop the summative assessment. We are talking about online and rapid turnaround of results as well. This is, I think, one of the most exciting pieces about this is that we'll be able to get information back to teachers nearly immediately after the students take the tests and give them feedback about where students need help and whether students are doing well. Another major feature is that we're talking about computer adaptive summative and interim assessments. And for those of you who, for whom this might be a new term, computer adaptive assessment, essentially what happens is students start out with a test question that's of medium difficulty. If they answer the question right, then they get a test question that's a little harder. If they answer the question right, they get a test question that's a little harder, and so on, and so on, until you get to the narrow range of where a student's achievement is. And then you kind of just focus all your questions onto that range where the student is. What that means is you don't have to give as many test questions to find out where a student is, so the test can be a little bit shorter. It's pretty nice. One of the things that happens with computer adaptive assessment is that students who typically have not done well on tests feel like this was one of the easiest tests they've taken because it was targeted toward them. And students who have typically done very well on tests find out, say that this is one of the harder tests I've ever taken because it's targeted toward their ability. So it's a different experience for the students, but it's targeted directly at where the students are. We are talking about teacher involvement in item development, item review, and test scoring again. A really important part of that is to make sure that, you know, having teachers be involved integrally, and this is a big part of our validity argument. This is what teachers know and do in the classroom. This is what students need to know and do in the classroom. We also have item types. We'll continue with some multiple choice because there still are plenty of things where multiple choice will be the most efficient and valid way to measure. Short constructed response, extended constructed response, technology-enhanced and performance tasks as well. And the timelines, the master plan was developed and the work groups were launched last year. We began the development of the formative processes, tools, and practices last year. We actually translated the Common Core of State Standards into the content specifications and item specifications last year. This year was the deadline for all the states in the consortium to have adopted the Common Core of State Standards, which has now happened. Next school year, we'll be talking about item, we'll actually be doing item writing and review activities completed. We're actually starting that sometime next March, next April. Should be complete by the end of next school year with pilot testing of the summative and interim assessments conducted during that same school year. Field testing, we'll be doing some large-scale field testing in 2013-14, and we'll be setting preliminary cut scores on the test between the 13-14 and 14-15 school year, going to operational summative assessments being administered spring of 15, and then setting the final achievement cut scores. So that's kind of our timeline. You can see it's moving relatively quickly, particularly for a consortium that consists of this many states, it's a really fast timeline to get things done. The things that the states, individual schools have to worry about, we are supposed to have the technology readiness tool available this year. The vendor's been hired. They're developing the readiness tool and will be, will be rolling that out to districts to help them understand what they need to do to get ready. Teams of teachers will be evaluating the formative assessment materials next year. Formative tools will become available between the 13 and 14 school year, the 2013, 2012-13 and 13-14 school year. And then field testing, schools will actually be involved in the field testing in the 2013-14 school year. And then again, full implementation happens in the 2014-15 school year. So again, we've got a lot of things coming up in the near future. One of the questions that happens that we often get is how is this going to be sustainable? One of the reasons we get that question is that the $170 million that was put toward this initiative by the U.S. Department of Education is solely for development purposes. It does not, is not, we're not allowed to use the funding to actually go out and administer the assessments. So we will need to continue to exist in the 2014-15 and beyond because we actually have to give tests. We can't just develop them and stop. So we need to be able to oversee refreshing of all of our products year-over-year and giving the assessment year-over-year. So the organization that we currently have is designed to develop the products, not to administer and refresh the products. So there's a sustainability task force that was put together, and the first meeting is this month. So we're actually looking at what will the organization look like when we actually have to develop the assessments? What kind of, what kind of entity are we actually going to put together to make this a sustainable effort into the future? I'm also on the sustainability task force.
As you notice, Joseph has a lot of time on his hands to be able to do all this. We really are, getting aside, lucky to have his leadership and then his whole team so thoroughly involved. That's why we're going to have a product that's really good for Michigan. It's pretty thorough, but any follow-up questions or anything? Dan and Mary Ann? And Kath and Nancy?
Three questions, a quick. One is, so interim assessments do not need to be field-tested?
Interim assessments will be field-tested. Pilot testing of summative and interim assessments will be conducted in 2012-13, and it should have said field testing of summative and interim assessments in 2013-14.
Okay, all right. Are we a pilot state?
Yes, every state will be a pilot state.
Okay, great. All right. So we'll have feedback from here in Michigan next school year?
Yes.
All right. Second question, are states who are participating, governing and/or advisory, are they required to actually administer this at the end of all of it? In other words, after all of this, you know, is it possible that, I don't know, is it 24 states that are member the Smarter Balanced Consortium?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Is it possible that eight of them will opt out?
It is, it is possible that states would opt out, but I don't, I don't foresee that happening a lot or even at all, simply because the cost of developing assessments that can measure the rigor of the Common Core, I don't think that a state could afford it. I think that in order to be able to afford to do this, you have to be a part of a consortium because there are economies of scale. The consortium is talking about assessments that go far beyond what we currently do for approximately the same price as what we pay for what we currently do. So the economies of scale are really quite significant.
Got it. Last question, I'm assuming that since the, both the PARC test and the Smarter Balance test are tied to the Common Core standards, that they will actually still compare kind of apples to apples? Or is that, will we only be able to compare results with other Smarter Balance states? Or will we also be able to compare results with PARC states?
One of the things that we were asked to do by the U.S. Department of Education is to assure comparability between PARC and Smarter Balance. That does not mean that a score on one would mean the same as a score on the other, but what we're hoping for and what we're shooting for is that proficiency would mean the same. So that you would have a cut score on the PARC assessment, which, for those who don't know, is the other consortium of 23 states that is developing a different set of assessments. And so we are looking, we are shooting for making sure that if a student is proficient on the PARC assessment, they would also be considered proficient on the Smarter Balance assessment.
Mary Ann?
Thank you. Well, thanks for asking. That was one of my questions. And I guess the other thing, when you're working on this plan, is that for all the states in the consortium, all the 28, or are you working on things particular to Michigan?
When we're, when we're working as a work group, we're working on things that are for the entire consortium. So we do have, we have dedicated some resources to, or we've committed some resources to work on this simply because we think it's important for us to have a say in how this, these products ultimately look. But when we do work on the work groups, we are working essentially to make sure that the consortium is viable. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, pretty much. I guess I'm, I just want to be sure that if we've got a Common Core, that everybody's doing the same thing. You know, that, you know, if we're saying everybody needs to be adopting the same thing, then the carry-through should be pretty uniform too.
Yes, that's the intent, is that the products would look the same, the Smarter Balance products would look the same regardless of what state you're in?
Mm-hmm. Is that the object that we have on the Common Core?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Kathleen? Or, I'm sorry, did you have, yes, Kathleen?
Well, I just had a thought. I was going to ask a question about PARC, so, but I wanted to know, you said that we saw some of the background in 2014, and I wondered if that includes writing questions that have, you know, multiple choice, but writing, maybe will there still be three people reading, or two people reading, and then a third of the...
There have been a lot of advances made in artificial intelligence for scoring of writing tasks. So what will happen is for the writing tasks, those will be automatically scored, and there will be read behind by humans just to make sure that the computers are doing their job right. So there will continue to be read behind, but...
All of them or samples?
Samples. So there'll be sample read-behinds for, just to make sure that the computers are doing the job right. So all of the portions that can be scored by computer are, you can get those back almost instantaneously. So that would include the essays, that would include the technology-enhanced items, that would include the short constructed responses, kind of short answer-type things, and the multiple choice. The things that would have to be scored by hand would be kind of those performance tasks. There hasn't been yet developed a good artificial intelligence system to score performance tasks, whereas there's been a lot of good advancement over the last few years in terms of artificially, doing artificial intelligence scoring of essays.
Herman Melville wouldn't have had to do so many rewrites. He could have just thrown it in and gotten some feedback. I think Nancy was next, and then Eileen, or?
Yeah. Listen. Sorry. I'm going to go back to my notes here. One of the things that I noted when you were talking about, let's see, where can I find this? We're going to skip that moment because I can't find it. You recognize that syndrome, right? Mike, where'd he go? There was, where did it go? Why don't you let somebody else go while I find my note? Oh, whoop, found it, found it.
Sorry, too late. Eileen?
Ah, sorry.
Losersweepers.
Okay. At any rate, you talked about, no, this isn't the right note either. Never mind. You go ahead. Sorry.
I can go, and we can come back if you want.
Okay.
There was, there was a rumbling at one point. There was, there was a rumbling at one point about Common Core doing science. Is that on anybody's drawing board at this point?
Yes, there is a consortium of states that is getting, working together in the same way that the National Governors Association and many states worked together to create the Common Core, state standards in math and sci, in math and English language arts. There's a different consortium of states that's working together right now to create something like the Common Core in science, although they're not calling it the Common Core. They're calling it the Next Generation Science Standards.
And we are one of those states?
Yes, we are one of the states.
That was the first one. I actually have three. The next one is how, whether in our, in our yellow document here that lists all the things we think should be funded in education, whether we have to be asking for teacher training funding for formative assessment and data use for this?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, this is on. We have as item G, a list, a laundry list of things that we want money for in education. I don't mean to be flippant, but things that we feel are important. And earlier, I think maybe six or eight months ago, I asked you how the states were planning on funding through Smarter Balance, training for teachers for data use and learning how to use formative assessment. And it didn't sound as if the, as if USDAO had adequate funds for all the states?
Right. The funding that came as a part of the 170 million, there's a portion of it that's dedicated toward professional development, but we don't think it's enough. So we're looking at other avenues of funding, you know, not institutions, but foundations and those kind of things. But that's a question that has yet to be answered, how we'll go about getting adequate funding for the professional development piece. We can have all the tools out there on the web, but if there's not the professional development to support it, you know...
It will fall flat on its face. So is there any assessment by either Michigan, Michigan's knowledge of its own state or any projection of cost of what that really should be for us?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, that was actually question two B. Question three is that Katie Haycock made a presentation to the governing board on Friday and she asked for studies to be done on how states were tweaking their state assessment as they prepare for Common Core compared to the NAEP. I didn't understand why that would be important, knowing the work you're doing, which seemed to be very logical. Is there some, is there some element to this that is more magical than even I have seen that requires oversight?
I don't think so. I think, I think other states, other, I don't want to, I don't want to oversell the one-to-one, almost one-to-one match we have between our high school content expectations and our grade level content expectations in the Common Core because of the increased rigor that it represents. But there are other states that are in a much worse place than Michigan is, simply because their alignments were not near what we had because of the rigor of what was passed in Michigan.
I think we're arm wrestle for it, I guess, at this point.
I'm going to just answer very quick here on your page nine. I think this is where you talked about how the computer adaptive summative and interim assessments would have the luxury of honing down where a student was by asking one question and then if they got that, then the next more difficult, the next more difficult. This is not for an entire test. This is for each section, isn't it, within the test?
Yeah, so there are a couple of ways you can do it. One is you can do the whole test that way. Or another way is to do testlets, so...
I didn't ask that right. Let me try again. If we're talking about mathematics, I'm going to use a very simplistic example. Talking about mathematics, and you would do this for addition, and then when you went to the section on subtraction, you would start over, right? You wouldn't automatically assume that because their addition skills were at this level, that so too would their subtraction skills be at that level?
Because of, because of the correlations among the different subjects, you typically can start where they, where you left off, but it might take you in a different direction. So, so for example, if you, if you started out in addition and subtraction and then went to multiplication, students who do well in addition and subtraction tend to do well in multiplication as well. So if a student does really well in addition and subtraction, you finish that section of the test and you start the multiplication test, you can start them where you ended up in terms of the difficulty of the questions on multiplication and that usually will give you a good idea of where, where to start them. But it might, you might have a few students who don't end up there. So they could, it will allow you to take off in a different direction depending on how well the student does.
What's the plus or minus error on that?
Actually, the plus or minus error becomes very, very small.
Really?
Yes, because, so just to talk about, when we give a MEEP test, we have to cover the entire range of ability on a paper and pencil test. So we have to cover that huge range of ability with, say, 50 items. Well, if you can hone in pretty quickly on where a student is and then, and then cover that small range with 40 items, wow, you've really gotten some really strong information about that student. So computer adaptive testing allows you to get very, very precise information about where a student really is, simply because you're not having to stretch your entire test out over that wide range. You're focusing everything on that small range that a student can do.
Again, I misstated my question.
Okay.
If I had subtraction and multiplication, addition and subtraction scored at the 70% level, then you would start multiplication at that 70% level. What's the plus or minus error on going right to the 70% error level? That's what I...
It's actually pretty good, but the idea is even if you start there, you're essentially starting over fresh with that student. And if the student gets the item wrong, then they, you get an easier item. It's still adaptive.
Okay, that's what I want.
Sorry about the miscommunication.
Well, no, I just didn't answer right.
Kathleen, please.
I, I have to know about what, does our, our, our course there, some of the other states, what questions would be the difference from current MEEP?
There's not a lot because of the really strong correspondence. I think in a lot of ways, it's the rigor of the questions. Adding more of those performance tasks, adding more of the essays, adding more of those technology enhanced items where you might have to actually do a simulation of something. That's what I think is going to be the biggest difference, is the types of items, the types of skills that the items would elicit, rather than mostly multiple choice.
That's interesting because we used to have questions like that. It was complicated, writing tasks on, and then they were taken up on the legislation of the Common Core. So does it ever put in there a different one?
Because the Smarter Balance assessments will replace MEEP and MME and math and reading and writing, we're likely to get something much more like a current writing assessment in grades four and seven in high school. Right now, because of the legislation, we're limited to eight hours of testing and that includes ACT and work keys and the Michigan developed components. So that, that limited the amount of, of constructed response that we could do. So it likely will look more like what we have in third through, third through eighth grade when we, when we move to this. So we'll get more of those, those types of items on the, on the writing assessment.
Okay. Good. Thanks so much, Joseph. Sally. Appreciate it. Good work. Keep it, keep it coming. Now, I think we're going to, this is where we inserted the, Eileen, you're up.
I wanted to, to notify the board that the National Center for Education Statistics and the National Assessment Governing Board are contacting states who have participated in the 2009 12th grade state level NAEP pilot that was given in 2009. And the, at this point, they anticipate, unless there are huge budget constraints, being able to add three more states for 2013. And Michigan was one of the states that had been explored. If you'll remember, the 12th grade preparedness commission with Ronnie Musgrove presented to the governor's education summit to a group of board members and staff and to the governor and his staff, the concept of participating in that sampling. It's about, if I recall, Joseph, I can't, is it about 4,000 students, the 12th grade? Do you remember the numbers? There are four to 6,000, I think, were some of the numbers that I heard. It's in that range, though. It's not a, yeah, it's not, it's not a, it's not all the children in Michigan, by many stretches of imagination. But I wanted to bring it up because they're, they're planning on doing that in the next month, from what I've been told. So I wanted to present it to the board and to the staff in case there was any discussion or questions.
I think it would be a good opportunity for us to look at, how we're all pitching certain.
I know that when they were here, they discussed the potential of research because Michigan is one of the few states that gives, the ACT is the major component for its high school, NCLB exam, so.
John?
Do you have your own summary of the pros and cons potentially, if any, for doing this?
I don't remember any. Joseph may remember cons, but...
I assume a con is that the NAEP score is a tough test and it would be exposing where we're not performing in some way, shape or form.
I tend not to look at it that way, John. I know you don't either.
No, I know, I'm just trying to make sure we're seeing, what, what would people say would be the benefits to us and/or any?
One more test.
Well, actually, right, one more test. The, you know that the NAEP results or the TUDA results are being released tomorrow. I just want to make sure everybody knows that in Baltimore at 10 o'clock, in case anybody wants to be on the webinar. Detroit, of course, is included. But I, I think it's a reality check for what we're doing and now I see where you're leading me. One of the things that would be very beneficial for us as we try to figure out how to do our waiver request, if we're looking at the next 10 years of do we have the right percentage level for our goal for proficiency for children, would be to participate in this assessment. If we're, I should say that there's a, there's a caveat here. We've been working now for six years, I believe, and spent millions of dollars on equating studies to see how the NAEP compares to TIMSS, PISA, excuse, TIMSS, Pearl's, others, other countries, international assessments, and ACT and SAT, to determine whether or not we can benchmark on the exam cut scores in reading and math that show preparedness for seven professions that range from a licensed practical nurse through a computer technician on up to higher level professions that take two to four years of college training and show also preparation, preparedness for the military without remediation. So as we're trying to figure out what the level is that Michigan kids should be educated to, this would be very valuable. And I'm sorry, I didn't pick that up earlier. Thank you.
I think I'm for us participating, but what formal or informal not approval do you need from us, the state, the superintendent, the board, anybody?
Well, I think the exploration originally was for information purposes and I believe that this is an administrative, not a board decision.
Mary Ann?
Is this something that, let's say, down the road, we adopt this test and so, is this something that would be used then for the career and college ready?
If you recall, under No Child, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
If you recall, under No Child Left Behind, fourth and eighth grade state participation in NAEP were mandatory. 12th grade participation is not.
There has been some discussion, somewhat quietly, about what the 12th grade assessment might look like under the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. Certainly ACT, SAT, our national tests that are out there, but so is the 12th grade assessment. So I can't tell you without the reauthorization, No Child Left Behind, or of ESEA, what will be coming, but it would, it would give us information that other states won't have. Only 13 states would have this, from what I'm seeing.
Now, I just would be cautious about students not doing well and is being prevented from going into college or...
It's nothing like that. The one thing about NAEP is that the results can never be attributed back to individual students or to districts or to schools. It's prevented by federal law.
Well, that's what happens with the, the 4th grade, the 4th grade.
No, the TUDA, TUDA's voluntary, just as this is, tell me, tell me what you mean.
But it came back to do its work.
They asked for that, they asked for that information. They, they asked to...
Publish.
Well, Mary Ann, it's a, it's, the council of chief, the council of great city schools contacts those, all the districts and with NCES and asks them whether that's a test they wish to take, to, to help them understand what other districts are doing. It's, it is a very brave move for an urban district to do, but they're helped by the great city schools organization to interpret the results and try and take them to the next level, try and take the students to the next level. As much as difficult as the TUDA results are for cities that are at the bottom end of the spectrum, we are hopeful that all of those cities, just as Washington has done and a number of other urban districts, Baltimore, that they can use those results to inform instruction. It's not a formative assessment, but the background questions help people identify things that will help them change.
So, no, I just want to clarify here. You're saying that the, and maybe I misunderstood you, that the, the results are not to be made publish. They're only...
They're published.
To inform...
But they cannot be attributed back to an individual child, a school or a district. So it would be a statewide compilation. Yeah. And I think that, I think the confusion comes from the TUDA, the trial urban district assessment, which is specifically attributable to a certain city's scores, but they've asked for that to happen.
Okay. And will, apparently will be asked for participation or not in this. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding criteria for grant program. Anything?
Maybe a 10 o'clock morning attempt.
Okay, I'll take that. And we recess for lunch. That was a quick one. We're going to go to the regular meeting. Good afternoon. The time is now 2:55 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting on December 6th is called to order. Can I have approval of the board minutes of the regular committee meeting of the whole on November 8?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy. Supported by John. Discussion?
She said she had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm really down someplace, but I feel like Nancy, I can't find her. It was just a word, I thought should be inserted something. Maybe that's... If you could approve it, you know, I could just give it to... Yeah.
Okay, with that.
I'm good.
All in favor, I?
Aye.
Oh, same? Thank you. John, please. President's report.
Just very quickly, mostly thanks and a few notes. Thanks, department and Mike. Green Ribbon Schools, thank you for having Michigan participate. I got contacted, others may have, schools that wanted to take advantage of this U.S. Department of Education designation as a school that is working on sustainability, energy efficiency and use it. And it's an opportunity to solidify commitment to green and sustainable practices in building. So appreciate us being willing to participate and hope it's not going to tax us too much. But thank you for responding to that. I think the discussion we had with Rod Muntz, ACLU and the whole family of issues, which around seclusion, restraint, discipline, how to treat it, Mary Ann and I got a follow-up set of ideas from Rod Muntz on potential board policy statements and exhortations. We talked a bit about that this morning. It looks like, I think we have our Michigan State University graduate policy intern happily tasked to work with the team on that project.
Yes.
And the team, Kyle and others, are looking at a family of things that we might do. So I really appreciate too that moving forward and...
It's working well.
Terrific. So, so we'll look for more of what we can do in that front there. And then Linda Forward just reminded me, I want to thank her and our staff again. I attended, and Paul was there, the young people that brought the diversity learning resolution with help from the department and University of Michigan and others, you know, have been now going around and organizing some very, very impressive, the one we were at, I guess the first one in Oakland County, had 100, 150 mostly school kids, but administrators, superintendents, teachers, bringing forward their own illustrations of what happens in our schools, how are we broken by tribe and ethnicity and gender and sexual orientation? And then more importantly, what do we do about it? How do we do better? How do we come together? And there was a very, very dynamic day of mostly student-led attention and it was fantastic and a lot... fantastic, and a lot of momentum to realize the promise of a plural society in our schools and celebrate that and do better than the natural balkanization by ethnicity, tribe, and who people are. So it was really impressive, and I gather there's going to be more of those, and again, the young people, Paul may want to speak to it, were the ones who provoked this, and I'm proud of the board for, and the department for helping nurture it, because it's, you know, if America represents anything, it's the place that has a myth that we all come together and make a plural society work, and schools are a place where we try to, again, live that myth or make it real, and we've got a long way to go, but we see exciting attention to it, and really important for our society. That's it.
Thanks, John. I'm going to reduce mine to just one item, really. I think the highlight for me this past month was kind of a three or four month plan to meet with the deans. They're referred to with different titles, but I think all 32 teacher prep institutions were represented here last week. The team and I, I think, had good dialogue with them. I think there's been some tension. I think we at least clarified some of it, reduced some of it, and probably didn't reduce other parts of it. I think we wanted to make the point that the system now with new laws has changed dramatically in the last year. High stakes for teachers with teacher evaluations, possible terminations based on those, high stakes for schools for takeover, and felt like we needed to synchronize the system more aggressively with the teacher prep institutions. And I think they brought some points to the table that I think were thoughtfully done. I found a couple of them had clearly pre-planned and in the best sense, and had some good thoughts that were following up with, that Flora and John are following up with. They know now that this is our first year, that we actually can take student achievement data, tie it to a teacher, and in turn tie it to an institution. That's not really reliable for a few years, so it's not the kind of thing we'd want to do much with this first year, but I think it was, it was a reminder again, and there's many new deans, by the way, that this is part of a complete system where we all share accountability and can't have it all hanging on teachers, you know, at the end. I mean, we need to do the best we can to prepare teachers for a very different world than most of us were trained in. And I, I know there was a rap at one of the, one of the rules, public hearing, and I was affectionately, or maybe not so, sung about in that rap, but I think, I think we cleared the air on some of that. I think people have been over-reading the dire circumstances. I think we want them to know that, you know, the board and the department are paying close attention, and that we need to figure this system out together. We did agree on some work groups together that we're going to work together on, but ultimately end up in a situation where, when Dan, I think, earlier talked about the resources necessary for the districts with the toughest circumstances, in my mind, the biggest resource that we're still not close to equalizing is effective teachers, you know, that have the greatest tools. And it's because these are the hardest places to teach. So, I mean, we'd be less than honest to not just say that lots of teachers go to easier places to teach, and especially when you start having policies that have ramifications for your, for your employment. So it's a, it's a big problem, and I think one of the next steps we're going to have to work towards is that what's the role of the teacher prep institution and induction, real induction? What's the, is there almost maybe a warranty that we would work towards? But also then having a fair issue where where's a cutoff time? I mean, an extreme example, but clearly a teacher prep institution can't be responsible for a teacher that's been in the field for 15 years. You know, they've developed other habits, and, but there's a point in time when if a teacher in their first couple of years can be held to this very high accountability of not being effective under the, under the new law, we need to have co-partners. I thought, I thought that Flora and John did just an outstanding job in presenting to them. I think it answered a lot of questions when you made the presentation on a lot of our issues. An highly productive meeting, I thought, so I wanted to mention that. Yes?
Can I ask a question about that? Do you plan on, this is exciting, when this happens. Was it the sense of the, those that were participating that this would be, this would be beneficial to have this as an ongoing kind of an opportunity?
They followed up and would like that. We've got to make a judgment about how often it would be with the entire team versus, versus Flora and the sub-work groups, but yeah, no, they would like to. I think they felt that, you could see there's a lot of misunderstandings, that you, it's like anything else, you know, that the more you can hear each other, you can understand each other, and as I said, I think that Flora and John in particular really set the stage for important reforms that we need to move towards, but making people feel safe within them and that they're attainable.
I congratulate you and the whole team for doing that, because I think that's really, like you said, just like anything else, if there isn't good communication and there isn't an opportunity for everyone to hear the same thing, then a lot of misunderstanding takes place, and it's wonderful that you provided at least one opportunity.
Yeah, we'll continue with other opportunities. We just didn't quite agree yet on how frequently. Eileen?
I talked with Flora after I attended the Preparing a Solid Foundation for Teacher Preparation meeting, which was the one I referenced earlier in late October, and I think one of the, there were several points of tension, actually, tension enough that I was uncomfortable with the, with the teacher prep institutions, which takes a lot. And one of the things that was really a matter of concern for them was the whole concept of CEUs not being the ultimate measurement of teacher quality and for licensure renewal. So I don't know whether you touched on that, whether you got into that point for discussion yet. I'm not, you don't have to address it, but I.
No, I don't mind. A couple of things that I think, I wanted to, at least in my part, be clear about was I wasn't Mike Bullis or Ed Blues, that they have lobbyists that need to meet with the legislature. So for example, when it was clear that the 18 credits can't be required, that's in the law. So the fact that they may be uncomfortable with that, and it's not a rulemaking issue, it's an issue. I happen to agree with it, by the way, but it's incidental whether I do or not. Found myself saying at the end that, again, I'm not Ed and I'm not Mike, and our job is to, is to try to make sure the best prepared folks are going to be with our kids. And I don't think, and this was very consistent with the board's paper on this, that we wanted to express that we didn't think the only way was a master's degree. It is a way, and for many folks, it would be the way. And then, and then there was, there was a lot of misunderstanding about alternative cert, again, because it's, it's in the law. It's not a matter of discretion that we want to have alternative certs. So a little bit of this you had to let go on for a while, just to help people vent their concerns about it, but I think they felt a lot more comfortable at the end, what they could have an impact on. We really encouraged them to, they'd already been pretty thoughtful on the rulemaking and submitted their, their thoughts about the rulemaking pieces that, but it helped get it passed. That part of rulemaking is based on law, not on discretion. So, I mean, it cut through probably seven eighths of the, of the tension when there was the realization that that's the law is alternative cert, that's the law on the 18 credits, et cetera. So, but that's also helpful, because otherwise you can start reading into each other's motivations, and I think a lot of that was going on and unnecessarily. And Flora and John both have great relationships with them. I think ended up okay. Kath?
I have been getting questions about the alternative certification, and that, so you're saying at this meeting, you clarified that that was the law, and this was not something you had dreamed of?
Yeah, I mean, you know, with the job, and with your job also, not just mine, but comes baggage at times for things, but I think in this case, I think they left understanding that. They're still going to have, you know, let me give you an example. You didn't even have to have certification as an administrator for, what, 20 years?
10, 12.
10, 12. And, and it's not like school districts ran out and said, let's go hire the guy running the gas station down the street. I mean, almost everyone took traditionally, maybe to a fault, took traditionally trained people like me, you know, and I think it's still in the water to a great degree, and it's all locally controlled. So frankly, even if we prepared, or the institutions that we approved, prepare 1,000 alternatively-trained administrators, as an example, local boards, if anything, by their history, are not likely to, you know, you just don't see an onslaught, and if they do choose to decide to hire an alternative certified person, I think that we should value that that seven-member board in District X thought it was the right thing to do compared to their alternatives.
The questions that I got were really geared to the alternative routes for teachers, certification for teachers, rather than administrators.
Yeah. I think that's the same, I would use the same analogy that.
Several were very upset about it.
If anything, there's a strong bias, and there should be, by the way. I mean, because otherwise, there is a, there is a cognitive dissonance almost, that how on one hand are we beefing it up for the traditionally-certified teachers, and then kind of, from one point of view, looking like the floodgates are open for alternative certified. Well, that's why I think taking into account when a local board or a principal makes a decision about a teacher, they're going to take that into account. But I think where it's really going to be a value, particularly in some of our most struggling areas, is there are alternatively-certified teachers who have a proven track record and are doing a good job. In some cases, it's simply that I can't get a traditionally-certified person in an area. You know, so there's, there's almost no downside to this, because it's all ultimately locally-controlled. They don't have to hire anyone who's not traditionally certified if they don't want to, and as I said, if the track record, remember when Angler first took that off, everyone said, oh my gosh, you know, you're going to have the hardware store guy's going to become the principal. It just, it didn't happen. And that was with it off. You know, these alternative certs have structure around them, so there's still, but yeah, I, I mean, they all have their own job to do, and I get the discomfort with what does this mean for us if everyone doesn't run and get a master's? Or what does it mean for us if large numbers of people go to alternative cert? It's going to be a supply and demand issue, I think, by local districts and who they hire. So we, yes, ma'am?
But it's also true that there's an unparalleled opportunity for universities here to try to figure out, and this is what I pointed out to them when we were talking about it, you know, nobody has professional development that's really, really working. There are things that do work, but there's no district that I know of, no ISD that has developed a conclusive set of professional opportunities, professional development opportunities, and ed schools could have a huge role to play in this, partnering with schools.
I think they, a lot of them, I was really impressed with them in general, and I think a lot of them realize their opportunity now, Eileen. I think they were overwhelmed with misunderstandings about what might be able to be changed, and then once you get past that, you start focusing on, okay, it is what it is, what's our opportunity? But it was, it was interesting, we debriefed afterwards, I thought it was interesting where for a while it was almost, well, Mike, you need to do this on our behalf, and I finally said, you know, I'm not your paid guy, you know, that's, that's Blues, and then they started to say their politics, which I won't repeat here, but Sandra probably would know more than I would. So I was, it was very good, and we'll continue, sub-work groups and occasionally meeting as an entire team. Paul, you're on.